Yes.
Loud and clear.
He always jumps the gun when we go live. Wait for your cue. We are live now. Go ahead.
All right. You're listening, you're looking at the Widdymore Community Magazine, our power right here on W P. Look, we had to throw that in there. Okay, we had to throw that in there. We're going live Facebook. We want to welcome all of our viewers. And just stay put with us today, because we've got some vital information that everybody can use and it's needed. Just to keep everybody updated. And rather than us just getting the information and delivering it to you. We're going to have some principal people, as you can see, our illustrious mayor of City of Conway, Mayor Barbara Blaine Bellamy. And our illustrious county councilman, Orton Bellamy. He's the Ori County Council. And we'll welcome the both of you, who I'm sure you're anxious to share some information regarding the impact of the COVID-19. And what adjustments that have been made and what adjustments you all see in the future that could happen. But before we go, thankful to our, I always give her our accolades, our engineering residents, Sister April Garner.
Hey, everybody. Thank you for joining us this week once again. Appreciate it.
And appreciation goes out strongly to April. As we usually start with our showing our appreciation and well, sending our condolences to our sick and shut in, of course, out there. And we usually go by the jurisdiction. We try to get it alphabetically, but it doesn't work all the time. So we'll start, we always start with A- Anna. So.
How about Allentown?
To join in.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna run it with Allentown.
Oh, A- Anna.
You already said Anna. You started with Anna. Shout out to Anna twice. There you go. Bucksport. Thank you, Mayor. Bucksport. Bucksville, Carvers Bay.
Oh, yeah. Tucker Town.
Yeah, Merle's Inlet, Paulie's Island. Come on, join in, Councilman Orton Bellamy. Yeah.
You can say Brooksville.
As a matter of fact, since you're viewing with us.
From Brooksville, yes.
Cool Springs. Yeah. What, okay, if you're, yeah, if you're viewing with us today, why don't you drop your location in the comments and we'll give you a shout out? How about that?
Right, absolutely.
There you go. All right. So we still got some more. Greensy Lures.
Yeah, Little River.
Big River. Wumpy. There you go. Wumpy. Longs. There you go.
Yeah.
Red Bluff, Mount Henry.
All right.
North Myrtle Beach. Yeah.
Nine oh five, calls everything.
Merle's Inlet.
There you go. Plantersville, Maryville.
Chappy.
Georgetown.
Yeah. Shout out from Conway, Reverend Reed, Tanya Harian. Thank you for tuning in. Davina Hill, thank you for tuning in. Oh, Carolina Forest, Connie Manago, thank you for tuning in.
Absolutely.
Drop your locations. Let us know where you're viewing from. We'd love to shout you out today. Where else have we missed? Marion County.
All right.
Grisham. Yeah. Yeah, Britain's Neck.
Mullins. Never played Mullins.
We need to break it down to the community's mayor. Let's break it down.
Yeah, I just can't help much with Marion County.
Big city of Raines, South Carolina.
Raines. There you go. Raines. Okay, we got Bridget. No, Bridgertary. Bridgertary. Bridget Williams. Bridget Williams from Connecticut. There you go. Bridget Williams from Connecticut. Thank you for tuning in.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, we're so grateful to our viewers. Just want to let you all know that. But keep tuning in. We have information, always have information that we think that you all can use. So we want to keep it in that kind of format. And today is no exception, but it is special because we got, we got two principal people here who can, I think, can deliver some information that is going to be very helpful, even on a national basis, but for sure on a local basis of all of Ori County. So, April?
Yes. All right. So Rachel Bar Cash Flow from Myrtle Beach. That's a long name, but thank you for tuning in. And we'd just like to say thank you to everyone who's here today. We have two of Conway Ori County's finest joining us today. And they're going to give us some information on how COVID-19 has impacted the City of Conway and Ori County at large. We have Orton Bellamy, our Ori County Councilman, who is joining us with updates regarding Ori County. And of course, I save the best for last, the illustrious mayor of the City of Conway, Ms. Barbara Blaine Bellamy. We have her here today, and I'm so honored to have both of them with us to talk to us and to share some words with all of you who are viewing today. Far and near, you're going to get some great information about the City of Conway, Ori County, because of course, we aren't just about the City of Conway, Ori County. We are a thoroughfare for a lot of visitors who come to this area. And of course, our mayor has been doing some wonderful things along with city council to make sure that Conway is inviting. And of course, our Ori County Councilman, Orton Bellamy, has also been on the grind trying to make sure that Ori County is welcoming to all of our visitors. So we have them here today to share some great information with us. And I'm gonna let them introduce themselves. So why don't we start with ladies first, Mayor Blaine Bellamy. Give it to us.
Thank you so much, Avril. I started to say earlier that we all know you're biased. I have been sure of knowing you since the day you were born. And thank you for the accolades. But I'm Barbara Blaine Bellamy. I am so very thankful to be here. First thankful to God because he has given me life and health. And thanks to him and to many of you for me being able to define myself as the mayor of the City of Conway. I'm truly honored, not only for that, but for the Widdymore Magazine to ask me to be a part of a group this afternoon. We're going to try our best to actually bring forth information that is pertinent, that is critical, information that will be helpful as we continue to fight this horrible pandemic. Thank you so much for having me. And if you don't mind me, I'll ask our illustrious county council representative for much of the City of Conway proper and surrounding areas, Mr. Orton Bellamy. Would you like to take over your job?
No, you did a great job. Thank you.
Everybody. I'm Orton Bellamy, Ori County Council.
Is it buffering on your side?
Yeah, it's buffering on both of us. Thank you too, Barbara.
Yes, I mean, yeah.
Okay. Councilman Bellamy, if you can hear me, you're buffering. And so we're kind of hearing every other word. So you may want to just kind of check. Can you email or text him, Brother Edward?
Absolutely. Surrounding communities.
Yeah, he's gonna have to come back and give us another. I'm gonna take him out of the stream for just a second. Okay. All right. I'll take him out of the stream and I'll give Brother Edward a chance to get in touch with him to let him know that his internet connection needs to be checked for just a moment. So why don't we just kind of come back to you, Mayor Blaine Bellamy? And if you will, tell us what, I don't think that we've had a chance to really hear from you since, you know, the pandemic was announced and there were closures that took place very quickly in the middle of March. So, yeah, I'm sure you have a lot going on in your head right now and have worked on a lot since probably about March 16th. So, you know, you can just start wherever you want to start. Yeah, as far as talking about what's going on in City of Conway.
Counting backwards is a little bit difficult, but clearly, beginning about early March, life started to change as we know it. There came the existence of COVID-19, first known simply as coronavirus, something that apparently has spread intercontinentally across the world, something that a layperson like myself could never have even known to expect, let alone be prepared for. But when we came to understand that the greatest help to spread the virus is human contact, and the greatest deterrent to spreading the virus is people being semi-isolated, the city immediately took action. We decided that to support the health and well-being of both our employees and our staff fairly early on. I can't say an exact date right now, but we closed our lobbies, for example. A person can interact with city staff by telephone, by email, but would not be allowed to walk into the lobbies. Simply, we're just going to try to reduce human contact. The city operates a fitness center, a recreation center, which is one of those places that by, by what happens there allows close contact with people. When you have interactive sports, you know, people are even touching. So, and there is constant use and reuse of recreational and fitness equipment. So one of the first closings that the city experienced or decided on was that recreation center. We just needed to put space between people and to help stop the spread of the virus. Over time, our big decisions have been based on those decisions that have been mandated by the governor. Over the last several weeks, throughout March, throughout April, and now into early May, we've been responding directly to mandates through executive orders by Governor Henry McMaster. And his level of restriction on our movement, our assembly, the places that were, the businesses that were allowed to be open has gotten, from the beginning, got stricter and tighter until such time as our numbers started to look a little different. And more recently, he has been much less restrictive. As of today's date, the 11th of May, indoor dining is allowed. I didn't see that coming so soon, but restaurateurs are asked to follow the guidelines of the Center for Disease Control. There are specific guidelines for safety protection, for cleaning up, for distancing people in such a way that even though they're in relatively close quarters, that they won't be as close as they might have been when they were at full capacity. We've had almost every level of retail open for about two weeks now. If I, and if I can just say this one thing, I'm not going to steal the entire show, is my greatest concern is that as the governor's office eases the limitations, people very quickly respond. A quick example is, I was inside a restaurant in order to take out an order. And this was a place where you had to physically go inside to pick up your food. And the day after one of the restrictions was lifted, I walked in, there must have been eight or 10 customers spread out inside what had been formerly the dining area. And I was the only person in there with a mask, wearing a mask. I've said this time and time again, the best advice is that because a place is open, doesn't mean that you need to be there. Doesn't mean that you need to stay there an extensive amount of time, and certainly doesn't mean that you should go in there unprotected. I heard the governor this afternoon, and we'll get into the things that are more current in a little bit, but I heard him say this afternoon that people should still use the advice of the medical community, of the scientists, or the CDC, and DHEC, and take care of themselves. The responsibility is becoming more personal as the governor takes steps that will allow our economy to start building again. He's leaving it to us now to be careful, and it's ours to do.
It is. And so, you know, just a few minutes ago, the governor did a briefing and talked about the fact that the barbershops and salons will now be open as of May 18th. There was a list of guidelines for precautions and things that they need to do to make sure that they are following the sanitation guidelines and things of that nature. And it's a pretty extensive list. I mean, it pretty much covers everything in health and beauty. So now we've added another dynamic to this that people have been anxiously waiting for. And, you know, now more than ever, it's important for people to really adhere to these guidelines so that we, I won't say that we won't go back to the severity of COVID-19. It is still severe. But following the social distancing guidelines and also the sanitation guidelines will help us to hopefully not return back as quickly. But, you know, it's, it's just, it's kind of like a wait and see type of a situation at this point. And one poster pretty much, she says self-responsibility. It is about everyone just being cognizant of what they need to do as an individual. And not only just looking out for themselves, but they're looking out for other people who may be affected, even if they don't feel like they're infected. So Ori County Councilman, Ori County Councilman, Orton Bellamy, are you stable now? Do you think you're good?
You probably, you don't have a mute.
Yes, try and, yeah.
Okay, you took it off.
All right. So you didn't have a chance to really introduce yourself. We couldn't hear because you were buffering. But yeah, let's go back there and then kind of give us your thoughts as mayor has.
My thoughts on the opening of businesses in the transition.
Yes. Yes. And what your perspective is on what's been going on with the COVID-19 in Ori County.
Based on the recent data from my governor, Henry McMaster.
And we've lost them.
Yeah, we're back with you. With me now?
Yeah, we're just, you know, I don't know what we can do to stabilize your connection. If you're on your, I don't know if you're on your computer or your phone, but you may want to try a different device.
Can you do it on, you have a, can you do it on your phone, Councilman? Can you hear me?
Okay, Brother Edward, I'm gonna let you troubleshoot that part with him. I'm gonna take him off of the stream. And yeah, if you will, just kind of connect with him and we'll kind of keep the conversation going, okay?
Yeah, yeah, let me.
Okay. All right. I'm gonna mute you for just a second here while you do that. Okay. So Mayor Blaine Bellamy, tell us what's going on with Conway. I know it kind of started with that, with the outdoor dining. How did that transition happen? What did you have to do to prepare all of the business owners and, you know, kind of get the message out to them on what to do?
I think the message was out very quickly, since the governor typically does a public announcement of his new mandate or his easing of restrictions. And so there was, I think there was a day or two between the announcement and the actual date when outdoor dining would be allowed. There are several restaurants in the City of Conway that were pretty ready for that. They had outdoor furniture. They had space on the outdoors that was safe from vehicular traffic. And moving outdoors just wasn't quite the issue for them. There are others in smaller spaces, and I might say particularly in the downtown, where there wouldn't have been much of a chance for that at all. The city truly is interested in having businesses up and running again and having business owners have an opportunity to keep their employees in place and to help people earn a living and feed their families. We just want to go about it carefully. So we closed a couple of alleys that had heretofore had some vehicular traffic just to allow opportunities for some of those restaurants. It was very easy for us to work directly with the owners to determine what space needs they had and what nearby space was made more sense. So you'll see a couple of downtown restaurants where they have sort of spilled out of their front door into the sidewalk area and into a park. You might recall that the city began allowing parklets about two years ago. Now, those kinds of parklets would require some actual improvement of the area. They actually mark off what was formerly a parking space and put some sort of barricade around an area so that there would be outdoor dining. But we also are now allowing it on the sidewalk without that kind of barricade. We've closed some alleyways and we've just tried to be, we've tried to relax our rules where it made sense. We want to reasonably help, but at the same time reasonably keep people in Conway safe. One of the things that was just reported, or was reported on yesterday, is that this past weekend, from May 8th through May 10th, which was Friday through Sunday, South Carolina has had 519 new cases of COVID-19 in two days, in three days, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday passed, and has had 15 new deaths. We did not have the kind of numbers, of course, that you would see in a New York City. We didn't have the spike of numbers that went straight uphill and then came back down like has happened in New York City. But instead, our numbers have zigzagged ever since our first case was reported. So I don't know what that means, just in terms of what our expectations can be for the future. I just know that there is total chaos and inconsistency in the number of COVID-19 cases in South Carolina. And this is not a time to lay down your defenses. I don't believe that this is a time to relax your guard. I think, again, that personal responsibility to self, to those you love, and to those you just care about, your neighbors, your friends. If we are going to move forward, if we're going to get our economy moving forward, the only way for us to do that is to do it safely and to make sure that we do it incrementally, that we try one thing to see how that works before we just sort of open up the entire gates.
Absolutely. So have you received any, you or any of the city council members received any feedback from the business owners about what kind of reception they received after moving to outdoor dining? Has it been, you know, has business been kind of steady, robust? People still a little hesitant? What's going on?
I have not heard directly from them, and my comment will be based on my own visual. But I have seen outdoor dining going on on one afternoon when it must have been 95 degrees. And to see as many tables filled in a few city blocks said to me that somebody is finding this rewarding and somebody's been waiting for this for a long time. So there is, it does appear to be robust. I haven't just sat and counted heads, nor have I done a poll of the restaurateurs, but clearly, it's something people have waited for. I think it was yesterday I drove downtown and even on a Sunday afternoon, and a pleasantly cool Sunday afternoon, there were, in all the restaurants that were open, there were people sitting out and enjoying spring weather, enjoying a meal out and at a table instead of what I've done too much of, which is go through somebody's drive-through and sit in their parking lot and watch traffic go by. So, you know, of course, there's some, there's some benefit to that. Indoor dining, I hope, I haven't read the direct specifications, but I know that there will, there will continue to be mandates regarding some distancing of tables, very possibly, possibly the number of people at a table unless they proclaim themselves to be a family. Some safeguards, just in terms of how many people can be in a restroom at a time, for example. Not to mention the other sort of sanitation items that are being passed down through DHEC. I am confident that our restaurants will take heed. I think that they want to be a part of the solution as they reopen. And I don't, I think that they would go out of their way to make sure that their employees remain healthy and safe, and certainly that their customers do as well, because it would take one instance of any notion that a person was affected or got their exposure at one of these restaurants. And that restaurant would not do well for a while. So I have all reason to believe that not only will they comply with the best practices that are set forth by DHEC, but that they will go above board. If you can, however, avoid going in, then you don't have anything to worry about.
That is true.
I mean, you know, you still have choices and you still have the right not to go. I tease about those people who have just taken this, this whole manner of keeping yourself away from other people. I know folk who have not been outside their homes since maybe the second or third week in March. I know people who don't pick up their mail immediately. They let it sit outside in the sun to sort of burn off those germs before they touch them. I know folk that are taking particular care with the elders in their homes. And my head is absolutely off to them. I can't say that I've been quite as vigilant, but I certainly would not, would not be a party to having anybody go out and not have gloves and not have a mask to protect others from what you may have and not be aware of and protect yourself from those germs that you're being exposed to as you move about the planet. I think the, the, the less often that you are out and about, the less often that you expose yourself, the less worry you'll have. Because this is spreading through direct human contact and with contact that other human beings have touched or somehow exposed to the virus through a sneeze or through a cough.
Absolutely. Just want to remind our viewers that if you have any questions or comments for the mayor, and hopefully Ori County Councilman Orton Bellamy will be joining us soon, please post. Okay, good. Please post them in the comments and we'll be sure to moderate those comments and questions to our guests. And I know that, you know, our mayor is usually very thorough. She's covered a lot in the eloquent way that she said exactly what is the truth, which is that everybody has a choice. But, you know, we just got to make sure that we are being vigilant about things. And, you know, hopefully that will mitigate any, you know, widespread activity. But as, you know, as we've seen before, as we, you know, as we continue to monitor things, it's easier said than done. And so she is here today along with Councilman Bellamy to just kind of talk about what, you know, the city and the county is doing to make sure that when it's time to turn to, return to business as usual, you know, that we understand what we'll have to do if we want to continue our business with City of Conway, for example, or in any of the Ori County offices, so that everyone can feel, you know, safe. Brother Edward, do you have anything you want to?
Yeah, I'm trying to troubleshoot. First, I'm going to give you an update on Orton, Councilman Bellamy. He's, he's using, trying to use a different device now. So he's probably going to his phone and see how things will work out there. He said, that's the one that he's going to pursue right now. So.
Okay.
Now, for the mayor, and this is probably, I wanted to ask Councilman Bellamy about the same thing, was that Bike Week, what do we know about Bike Week? And what kind of status can you provide to people as to whether it will occur? What, what structure is in place for them to, to deal with it? Well, you know, local authorities to deal with it because of this virus?
Our Bike Week would have been late May, and it's this month, actually. I have to say that I have heard nothing directly about Bike Week. I saw the end of a news broadcast that spoke to the fact that a bike rally was being, was asked to be, to be postponed until late July. Now, whether we're talking about Black Bike Week, the Harley-Davidson Bike Week, I don't know because I really just caught the end of that. Many of the viewers probably saw more about that than I did. So it hasn't been a part of the Conway discussion because there's so little, except sort of drive-through, as April mentioned before, there's so little interaction between bikers and the City of Conway. We have so few hotels and that sort of thing. I have not been made privy to any information about planning for Bike Week, but I'm certain that when we get our county councilman back, that that's something that he'd be more knowledgeable of.
Yeah, I regret not having him there to respond to that. But he's trying, just communicated with him and he's trying to use another device, namely his phone. So we'll see how that. namely his phone, so we'll see how that works out. Hopefully, we can get him back.
If I can say something else, just to, just to encourage people. Another factoid is, out of the nations, the entire United States, out of the nation's top 20 death count counties, highest death rate with COVID-19, out of the top 20, six of them today are in rural Georgia. That speaks very loudly and very soundly, or it should, to us. We are Georgia's neighbors. I've heard so many people say that, you know, they they had this feeling about cars that had tags from some of the hotspots, New Jersey and 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 New York, for example. And now, a newer hotspot is our next-door neighbor, and it's the state of Georgia. Now, I will forever wonder if the 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 quick and not so methodical reopening in the state of Georgia contributed to its now having such a high incidence of the COVID virus. But again, rural Georgia, rural, I think that's an important word because we're not talking necessarily about Atlanta or the county, whatever county Atlanta's in. But we're talking about rural Georgia. Six of their counties are among the 20 top counties in the United States, according, based on their death rate. I I think there are lessons to be learned.
You think they're going to heed those lessons? South Carolina, I mean, that that impacts us.
Yes, absolutely. I I spoke with a gentleman last week, who, when when there was not an opportunity to see a barber in South Carolina, drove to Georgia, where barber shops were open. You know, only, I don't know, I certainly don't want to anticipate that some tragedy will come out of that trip to Georgia to get a haircut. But, you know, all these things are tied together. No man is an island, no city is an island, no state is an island. And with the mobility of Americans, I mean, we just come and go at will. And I think we should come and go at will. I just think that it behooves us, that it is our responsibility, if if we take anything seriously, if we ever believe medical science, if we ever believe molecular scientists, that this is the time we need to pay attention. Much like the mayor of Atlanta has said so many times, I would so rather be laughed at two years from now for having been too cautious than to be laughed at for not being cautious enough. This is life and death. When you talk about 519 deaths in a small state like South Carolina in a weekend, I think that's substantial. I think the message from that, or the message we should take from that is that this pandemic is alive and well. And we've seen drops in numbers in a lot of places, but I don't know that anybody has said we're done. In Germany, and I don't know everything that they put in place and everything that they took away, but they they went from life as normal to a number of restrictions to help people not help spread the virus, and they reopened, and now there's an uptick increases. I mean, it makes perfect sense based on, based on what the scientific community is saying to us.
I don't know, I don't know what to make, make of that, except the fact that the proximity is should be of concern, you know, to South Carolinians. You know, big time.
Yes, and the message that going too fast, you know, just taking away all of your protective gear and just running into this place because it's there, and you haven't been in weeks, you've been restricted, and throwing caution to the wind, I'd say, is is not the way. I think we we need to, we need to think, we need to be resourceful, we need to protect ourselves. And and yes, I'll walk into a restaurant if I'm covered, and I won't stay any longer than I must, and I'll walk out with their wonderful food, and I'll sit at home and enjoy it. And that'd sort of be my recommendation for others of us for the time being.
Absolutely. There's a couple of questions and comments that are coming in from our viewers. And, you know, just want to, of course, acknowledge some of our viewers who are watching this from far and near. Thank you, Mr. Campbell, for watching for all the way from Atlanta. We do appreciate it. And all of you for tuning in. I see some new faces and and new names. That's great. Make sure you're sharing this information with everyone through your Facebook pages, through my Facebook page, through the Whittmore Community Magazine's Facebook page, so that we can disseminate this information, or as Brother Edward would say, this info as much as possible. We have some amazing people who have joined us over these past few weeks to to get this information out to you. One question is about the courthouse opening and operating at full capacity. Do you have any updates on the agencies or, you know, government offices as far as whether or not they're going to return to normal anytime soon? Or is that, you know, a part of government order as well?
So far, what I've read from the most recent executive order by Governor McMaster did not speak specifically to governmental offices. And I would rather not take a stab at it and be wrong. I know that staff has been working more inside the office, offices of late, certainly at the county level. And I know at some point, we're, we'll be there. I I just don't know how long that will take.
Okay.
They may very well know.
He may know. Hopefully, he's stable now, and can, we can talk to him. Definitely want to give a shout out as well to Theodosia Michelle, watching us from Baltimore. Thank you so much for for tuning in today. So. Yeah, unmute your mic if you can hear me. Brother Bellamy, can you hear me? If so, unmute your mic, and then you can speak to everyone. Okay, we're gonna try it again. We'll try it one more time.
He's good. He's good to go. You're good to go, Councilman Orton.
Go ahead, Councilman Bellamy. It's on you. Yeah, I think we're still having the technical difficulties, unfortunately. Yeah, it's it's. Okay, well, do us a favor, if you can hear me, because there are some viewers who'd like to know about county government. If you have any updates on whether or not there's going to be some county government openings? And can you text some information to Brother Edward? And he would be more than happy to share that with our viewers.
Absolutely.
Okay, maybe we can, you know, kind of tackle it that way. Because I don't think that your connection is going to stabilize enough for you to to speak with us today, unless you want to try going to your car. I don't, I don't know what kind of internet connection you have. But, yeah, okay, so maybe he'll do that, Brother Edward.
But we we apologize for that for, to our viewers, but, you know, perfection, what we're trying to reach, just can't get there right now.
We'll never reach perfection. It's okay.
Well, well, that's, that's why we should keep on trying.
I think our viewers are appreciative of what we're able to do.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's okay, you know, we can't, we don't control technology to a certain extent.
Yeah, we've had some very good feedback from the past broadcasts, and we appreciate that very much.
Absolutely. So there's one person who's asking whether or not you would advise people from the Carolinas who are coming home to see family. Do you advise them to come home to see family, stay home? What what would be your advice to people at this point?
I I need to be real clear. I give little bits and pieces of advice, general advice. But but now my disclaimer is this. I'm not a healthcare worker. I don't have any specific training. I will never be a scientist. I am, hopefully, a reasonable-thinking person who's just tried to keep up with what we're told by those people who are experts in these fields. Usually, I'm getting this information through television. And there's not much debate on a good bit of it. So my advice, the the basis of my advice is what seems to be sound information from bodies of people who are also new to COVID-19, but are a lot more learned than I am. So when it comes, one of the things that the governor of South Carolina said some time ago is that we were always allowed to visit our relatives. Well, a lot of families in in this area chose to not go visit families because to visit family meant a bit of a reunion. To visit family meant a typical house size, 1,500 square feet, heated, 20 people in in a closed space, who had been all kinds of places the week and the days before, and who might very well not know what it is they were exposed to when they were in those places and during those times. So when people gather together, because this this virus doesn't know who's kind to who, doesn't know who's who's the mayor and who's got money and any of those things, it does not care. It does not discriminate at all. But visiting family, and especially if you're from away, visiting family also usually means that while you're in with mom and dad, the neighbors come over because they want to see you. They only get a chance once or twice a year to see your face. I I just think that it is not the best thing to do. Now, there's a, there's another argument, and that has to do with how time is short and how people should spend what time they can together. I I get that. I mean, I I'm very close to my family, and I love their company. But I have a sister and brother in town. We usually, when we meet, it's at my sister's. She has a space in a den that is huge. We literally sit in three corners. When she unlocks the door, I wait for her to walk away. I go inside. We have not participated in the in the bear hugs and and the kisses that we're accustomed to. We keep ourselves separate. So I've visited my family, but I've taken some precautions while I was there. Just if you have any symptoms of anything that sounds like a cold or flu that could possibly be COVID, I would assume that they are. Just to the extent that you're not going to take a chance to give it to your loved ones. Otherwise, take reasonable precaution. I I can't advise anybody not to visit their family. I just say if you could put it off, not do it in May, but do it in August, hopefully, we'll be in a better place. But I could be wrong. We could have that resurgence that's being talked about by August. I mean, there are, I just don't have the clarity, I just don't have the information to be an advisor. But I think you get the gist of what I'm saying. Be thoughtful, be reasonable, be cognizant of what's going on around us. And don't forget COVID-19, whatever you're doing, and whoever you're visiting, and whoever you see from a distance, before you run up together and grab that hug, remember what's going on around you.
I think that people are kind of, they're getting, or they're thinking that the reopening means that COVID has gone away, and that that is so not the case. And but I think people are selective in what they want to understand about this situation. They're selective as far as what they want to believe about the situation and what they want to practice. So, you know, if saying that everything is reopening, it should be open, it's just giving them an excuse to do what they probably always wanted to do or what they've been doing ever since, you know, we received the precaution. It is what it is. And I I think that, you know, part of this this lesson for all of us is that, you know, we're responsible for our own actions.
That rings in sync with complaints that City Hall receives. We get calls all the time, and of late, the biggest complaint is that the dog park is is closed. Well, the dog park opened at one point, as our other parks are open. At today, every city park is open, except the dog park. Playgrounds are closed because we don't have the manpower to walk through every half hour and disinfect all the surfaces that these children are being exposed to. But you can certainly take a walk through the park, you can sit on a bench, all those things are open. The reason the dog park is closed is because when people get there, they congregate in great numbers. And the police have had to go out to say that we, this the state has restricted any gathering of more than three people. And here you are huddled together as if you're part of a football team. So for a while, we're going to keep the dog park closed. And it is not to prevent people from walking their dogs and and having a chance to fellowship with other dog owners and and have the wonder, I mean, have everything that's wonderful about the existence of a dog park. It just has to do with, we've tried it, and and people won't exercise social distancing or or not consistently enough. And we can't just sit back, not in good conscience, and allow, you know, to help that along. It it just doesn't make sense. So that that's some of the rationale. The dogs can, I mean, be walked in other places, but but that's what's behind that. I mentioned earlier, having gone into a restaurant in which I was the only person who wore protective gear. Somebody has decided that as we open up more, that we must be in a better place. Now, they apparently don't watch the shows that I watch, but, or read the reports that I read, but it appears that they're convinced that we can go right back to life as usual. And and I assure you, we are not ready for that. Mr. Bellamy back.
Yeah, he's back, and I think we're going to try a different method with him. And so Brother Edward, are you working that out, the suggestion I just sent to you? Why don't you just allow Orton to speak and and kind of broadcast it from your phone, since he's calling you? Am I correct? Right, so just let him go ahead and and answer questions, say what he needs, what he would normally have said during this broadcast.
Okay, you're here? All right.
He needs to leave the stream. Just tell him to leave the stream and talk to you over the phone.
Okay, Orton, we'll just, we'll just do the the audio, okay?
Yes.
So, so to to get back into stream, I I asked earlier about the Bike Week, and I think it's more of a county-wide issue than a city issue anyway, too much. So what can you provide, what information can you provide us on that in terms of what the plans are that so far that you've heard? Or anything else regarding Black Bike Weekend and the other bikes? Okay.
So say that again, Brother Edward. Can you repeat the dates and time that he said? Can you repeat the dates and time that he said, Brother Edward? Repeat those dates.
Yeah, can you repeat those dates for us, please?
July 13 through the 19th is for the Summer Bike Fest, which was scheduled for the month of May. That's been rescheduled for July 13th and 19th. And you also have the Fall Festival. I'll have those stacks of dates with me. I can provide you, I can check that real quick and give you an answer on that one, but that's the month of October.
So when he says Summer Bike Fest, does he mean Harley Week or Black Bike Week?
Well, no, the Black Bike Weekend, the Atlantic Beach Memorial Day Weekend. It's called by various different names. But for the Memorial Day Weekend Bike Fest, it's scheduled for, it's been rescheduled for Labor Day Weekend.
Okay, all right. So Black Bike Fest is rescheduled for Labor Day Weekend. And then the, okay, and the Harley Bike Week is July 13 through the 19th?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, and then Fall Bike Week or the Fall Bike Rally, when will that be?
October 19th, October 2020. I don't have the exact date. I can check my notes on that and I will protect myself on that one.
Okay. All right, so from a county standpoint, there have been some questions about when government offices will reopen and also what's going on county-wise to deal with COVID-19 and also to, I guess, get back to the reopenings that are happening under the governor's orders. So what can you tell us about what's happening now to get business back on track?
In fact, we'll be discussing that on our next county council meeting for the county, for opening up government facilities. Just ask the county, as soon as we're with the state government, it's going to be a heavy-handed operation. You have to look at, so like, I don't know, like, social distances. We organize offices and establish a protocol for when we return to the nearest place. There's going to be a phase-in operation for with that. But we'll be discussing that on our next county council meeting. Also, two, also discussion for, we have, we have a media video conference. At some point, we're going to move back to the, at some point, we'll be moving back to the early county chambers and going live from the chambers. But we don't have a date on that yet.
Okay, all right. Is there anything else you can tell us as far as Ori County updates are concerned? And what are your thoughts on the reopenings? And kind of give us, I guess, you know, what you encourage people to do as we go through this phase of dealing with COVID-19?
Well, I'm chairman of the Welcome Back Committee. And we have, I think, about twelve, fifteen members from Conway, well, represented from the Conway Chamber of Commerce, the Lower Chamber of Commerce. All the municipalities' chambers are represented on the media, along with, on the community, along with businesses, business owners throughout Ori County, along with, through the business owners. And while we're doing, putting together proposals, in fact, we did that at a meeting last Thursday. It was just a orientation. We got a chance to introduce themselves to the committee members. And next thing, we'll be going specifically to have some providing guidance for those various different type businesses. For example, we talked about restaurants, entertainment centers, movie theaters, barber shops, beauty salons, and providing guidance for us as, which we do have guidance, you know, from the CDC, you start on BIDAC. And then we do have the viewers to look at, tailor it specifically for what might apply in, and Little Beach might not apply in Conway, for example, in the area. So we're looking at specific guidelines and recommendations for business owners. And also, important, more importantly, the public itself, the customer, what protocols, what the expectation we have as them also. So definitely, and social distances is powerful, PPE, that is the key. Education and PPE and distances. And we follow the guideline, we can currently spread out the disease itself and contain it.
From both of your standpoints, has there been much discussion with our church leaders? Any guidance given to them about what to do through this crisis? And, you know, as one commenter said, you know, there's a lot of argument about the fact that retail establishes a reopening, but the churches have not. And, you know, and his particular opinion is not the same, and it really is not. But has the churches actually reached out to city or county government for any guidance? Or are they just particularly following the governor's orders?
Well, churches, with what you said, there's a need, any group that needing, I think the initial was on fifty or less in a church group. But what I would, what we're looking at, specific guidance for that would be that you wear a mask, everyone in the church service should wear a mask. And if you're in that type of setting, make sure you're six feet apart. So that's through the CDC guidance itself to prevent the spread of the virus itself, the possibility of spread.
Right, but we know that, of course, a lot of churches in our community aren't even large enough to support the six-foot rule in some respects. So, and I know that there are some churches that are actually conducting their services either out on their lawns or in their parking lots to try and do that. Mayor, you have some comments on that?
I do. I'm really happy that churches have so quickly, and in many cases on their own, come up with safe ways to deliver what we have always thought of as our Sunday services, that we've done in person. It was easier for those congregations who have Wi-Fi and who have the internet to put on services through social media and through YouTube and that sort of thing. But I was especially pleased when I heard that a few local, smaller churches did things like a drive-in service at St. Paul's Missionary Baptist Church, for example. The pastor stands on a bit of a hill in the center of an area that will accommodate dozens of cars being parked. They require that the cars actually park six feet apart and that the congregation stays inside their cars. I mean, they absolutely must sit inside their cars. So the only time there would be more than one person in the car is if they came together, and hopefully, they came from the same household, and they would have, the minister would have a microphone so that his voice could be dispersed well. And people have really enjoyed those services. So when it comes to creativity, I was really happy about what some people have done. Just before the governor actually lifted the ban on church services, three churches in the city of Conway contacted me about getting special permission to have services. And I declined each of those requests. I thought that, I personally believe, based on all the information that was given to me, that that would be an unsafe practice. And I worry about, I'm Christian. I'm a strong believer in God's power and abilities. But I believe that, I personally believe that God requires that we use the common sense He gave us. So I couldn't encourage people who would tell their congregation. But church is the exception. God will take care of you there, you know, come on out. We need to pray together. We need to be together. And I just feel like that maybe that is a bit of a stretch. And that's just a personal feeling. I'm not trying to cause a debate about what God cannot do or what God expects of us. That is just my personal feelings. Please understand that. But I did think that it was unsafe, that it would be reckless for us to support a gathering of hundreds of people within the confines of a church building and to say that that was okay. That ban has since been lifted, so it's a moot point. I don't know how many, none of the larger churches have yet begun their, you know, their regular services where folk come in in person. And I don't know how many other churches have, actually. I know of two that have in Conway. The churches, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Bellamy.
I just think that the cautious is still necessary right now because, even though the ban's been lifted, but, you know, but there's a lot of uncertainty about the passing of this virus that I think this should be, from a personal perspective, from a congregation, that they should devise some rules as to mitigate that happening again, okay?
And you said it so much better than I could have. Absolutely. Mitigate is the word. Mitigate means simply to do what you can to control, to contain those things that are troubling or troublesome. And not to take things lightly, even if it has to do with our spirituality.
Absolutely. So Brother Orton, is there anything else that you want to share with our viewers since we, you know, had to bring you in on a little bit later? Due to the technical difficulties?
Well, I think we're fully covered, really, really. We exercise the science that we have, what we call lessons learned from science, from best practices, and evidence-based practices from ourselves. There's a lot of unanswered questions, where we do know how it spreads. We know it's very lethal. And I think, and as you've all the studies and the scientific information and data, that we should continue to maintain those practices, even, because I'm a Christian myself, a Baptist faith, and God does give us knowledge. You have, you exercise good judgment. I think that's really important, especially when you're dealing with churches, that even with the, we can try as much as possible, maintain social distances as not possible, make sure as a minimum that the members who attend and have masks on, have hand sanitizer at churches, and just remind the congregation, it's really important that we wash our hands, wash our faces, try to reduce the spread of the virus itself. And that's for, anything that has to have part with that, continue that practice. Because our lives will never be the same once we've gone through this type of pandemic. And some show, even though we, we're a church, we relax, we meet, greet, hug, we have to realize that now we have to make some lifestyle changes and how we greet one another, how we communicate now. So I think that's really critical and important.
Okay, absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, I do have an announcement regarding free coronavirus or COVID-19 testing. Care Team in partnership with Mason Temple Church of God in Christ is conducting free coronavirus testing tomorrow from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And this is for people who are asymptomatic or who are symptomatic, actually, not asymptomatic, but symptomatic, and who've had contact with someone who tested positive for COVID-19. So if you are exhibiting some symptoms and you're not quite sure of what it is or you're feeling or thinking that, you know, it could be COVID-related, you can actually do the free testing tomorrow from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Mason Temple. If you've had contact with someone who tested positive for COVID-19, you can certainly go and have this test done. And again, it's free, and this is in sponsorship with Care Team. So I think that we've definitely had, you know, a good conversation with our mayor and also with Councilman Bellamy about, you know, what we need to do moving forward now that things are reopening and bans are lifted. And, you know, the main takeaway for me is that regardless of, you know, these measures that are being taken now to get us back on the streets and doing what we typically do, not that many of us stopped doing it, but, you know, a lot of us did. You know, we still have to be vigilant about the fact that the coronavirus is not over. It has not gone anywhere. It's still alive and well and could definitely turn into a second, more deadly strain. So we have to make sure that we're doing everything we can to not only protect ourselves, but protect others and just continue to do that, you know, until further notice, really. Mayor, Mayor Blaine Bellamy, can you give us your parting thoughts or, you know, your final takeaways from everything that you've experienced over these past few weeks? What do you want people to know?
At the risk of being repetitious, my call is simply that we not forget what's going on around us. That not only may our lives never be exactly the same, we should be very careful about how we move back into our old ways. Just make certain that you don't help promote the spread of the disease and that you aren't the cause for somebody's illness or death. And the way to do that is to just be cognizant of the fact that Corona is alive and well, just waiting to get more victims. And if you keep yourself safe, you're also contributing to the safety of everyone with whom you have contact. I wish you Godspeed and do the best you can, please.
Thank you. And Ori County, Ori County Councilman Bellamy, what are your thoughts and some parting words?
I think as we move forward, through the transition period to open up businesses, we, challenges are difficult, and we have to make some adjustments. I think personally, my personal view is that we can, we continue to maintain social distances, even if we, even once we have the virus under control. There are some studies show that we will have, even though we do, every year we have the flu, we still can use those same practices during the month of November through March, during the flu seasons, and try to reduce a number of flu fatalities also as we move forward, just maintain those same standards we have today and carry that out, six-foot, wear a mask, social distances, even if you're in an environment where you have a church, a public place, where you cannot maintain that distance, wear a mask. So I think those practices are always, continuation of practices, and that is a matter of educating the public. And I wish, you know, you wish God's Godspeed, same as the mayor.
Shouldn't they have masks on at all the time, all the time in the congregation? I mean...
Yeah, that's all, same. We should, during the practice, yes, at all times. Even when, even in, say, July, maybe June, July, where it's under control, we should continue it because you still have, even if specifically within your citizens, there are those vulnerable ones, the groups, you know, definitely with the sixty-five to seventy-plus individuals in congregation in general, and any, any other, any individual in there in public places like that, just to maintain those practices.
So Councilman Bellamy, when you all return to council chambers, are you going to be sure to wear a mask and practice social distancing?
Yes, we're practicing that, that is true.
Please set an example, please set an example. You too, Mayor.
Absolutely.
Yeah, should have those masks on.
That'd be the actual meeting, but we will have, because there is going to be a lot of stuff that has to talk to a mask. We will be practicing, as you know, we do have a probably about at least thirty-six inches of front by thirty-three between each council member. So we, and then this spread of the virus itself is should rock us anyway. So we're speaking straight, if we maintain what's straightforward in the audience, we're really, we're a little right, so we should be, yeah. We're practicing safety here.
Mayor, I'm sure you want to send out a shout-out to the class of 2020. I know you do.
Absolutely. My heart goes out to the graduating class of 2020. There are five hundred, exactly, five hundred young people graduating high school in the city of Conway proper. I cannot imagine what it would be to be a senior in high school and miss our senior class trip, miss our prom, miss a graduation ceremony. My heart goes out to you, as do the hearts of so many people who live here in the city of Conway. We have a special little surprise that is being developed to honor you. And I know that churches and other organizations are trying to do the same. do the same. Um, I believe that uh, uh, every curse brings a blessing. And in that vein, uh, something that I can't foresee now, something good is going to come out of, of um, the absences of these huge events in your life. Can't imagine what, but, but one day, hopefully one of you will say uh that you found out why you should not have been uh participating in something else on that day. But um, I offer huge congratulations. I'll say it over and over again through every venue I can. And uh, and again, closer to graduation day, uh, there will be something that um, uh, you can't not notice that the city is doing for its five hundred graduates. We have graduates from four high schools, uh, Conway High School, Conway Christian School, uh, Early College and from Palm, uh, the Palmetto Academy for Learning Motorsports. So we have four high schools within the corporate city limits. And congratulations to you all. You are no less a graduate. You've just been sort of um, a little cheated on the celebration. But uh, to the extent that we humanly can, we'll make up for that.
Awesome.
Thank you for that opportunity.
Yeah, yeah.
So nobody is, is uh, has presented, presented through the council or you any kind of strategy, strategy that make, they could use in order to, uh, kind of, kind of give them graduation, you know, by Wales uh visual?
Uh, nobody's approached the city because um, they would only need to approach us if they were asking for specific uh, um, opportunity to do something that would ordinarily not be done. Uh, this, our Ori County School Board is working diligently on anything that could even be a semblance of a graduation. The likelihood, however, within the next three or four weeks, which is about the time that graduation would typically be going on, it is extremely unlikely that we're going to be allowed by the governor um, to have that kind of assembly. Uh, a high school graduation just draws in people.
Yeah.
And um, even in the outdoors, uh, shoulders to shoulder on somebody's bleachers does not give sufficient protection between people to have that kind of event. Now, I've not been made privy to all the considerations that the school board has given, but I know that they recognize this as, as the challenge to be met in 2020. And I have confidence that they will do everything they can to honor and celebrate uh the county's graduation, graduating class. And, and I assure you that the city plans to do the same. And we're certainly not in competition. I've spoken to the chairman of the county, um, of the school chair, school board, um, to make certain that he's aware that we uh just wanted to do something special because of all the, the losses that uh, that our youth have had. Uh, you don't get to be a senior in high school but once. And um, and it's so unfortunate that this thing. Oh, yeah. Okay, there may be, there may be some exceptions to the rule. I hadn't even thought about that. Okay. With few, with few exceptions. With few exceptions, uh, you, you, you get to be a senior once. And, and I, I have that same feeling for those people who are graduating college, for example. But the difference is four more years of maturity and four more years of other interests. So I, you know, you know, we could do a study on who it affects the most, but it seems to me that a seventeen-year-old or eighteen-year-old who's about to graduate high school go through one of the largest milestones in their lives, maybe the first real milestone um, to um, lose what is common opportunity to, to stand in a cap and gown before a roaring crowd and, and receive your diploma and all the accolades that come with it. Um, it, it's a, it's a loss. It truly is a loss. Uh, I just know that we've got an excellent school board who will do what they can. And I'm sure they're still very much at work and trying to determine what that is. But as I said, the city of Conway is a, has a little celebration uh up its sleeve that uh, I can't tell you about just yet.
I know you, I know you entered the telling.
Can't wait.
Can't wait. Exactly. Her smile is so big, exactly.
I, I guess that's, I guess that's what I was trying to pull out of you, is, you know, um.
Brother Edward, she's not gonna tell it. She's not gonna tell it.
It's classified. It's classified.
Yeah, Brother Orton said it's classified. There you go.
Classified. So you'll just have to wait and see.
Yeah. Yeah, the same kind of issue with the uh, as, as we have stated that, uh, you know, you, you only do this one time, winter, like one time, once in a lifetime, graduate high school, your family's here, uh, picking up your diploma, milestone, moving forward to uh college, uh, you know, moving on to other professions in life. So uh, uh, yeah, so this is gonna be uh the first treasured moment in life. So it's totally, totally different graduation for them, uh, being in the, there's something that's life-changing. They, they will forget this moment in life going through a, a pandemic like this.
Mm-hmm.
At our graduation, uh, and that mine was fifty years ago, uh, this June, fifty years ago, and I have not forgotten, that our principal said to the graduating class that after today, there will not be a time when all of you are gathered in the same place. And I thought that he had lost his mind. What did he mean, we'd never be together again? But he spoke with wisdom and that has been our experience. Not a single time has there even been an appreciable number of us together in one place. So um, having missed out on those last three months of school, all that camaraderie, all that partnering, all that.
Yeah.
All that fun, silly teenage stuff, um, got cut short. And uh, and it's a, it's an important, it's an important milestone. So um, to everybody who's um, viewing this, uh, just, just take a special minute to, to call or send a card to anybody that you know, because such is the case in most jurisdictions. Uh, I don't know a place that's having a traditional graduation ceremony. Um, and it has to do with our trying to protect ourselves. So um, yeah, be really kind to a graduating senior.
All right.
Yeah, yeah, really.
Well, this has been a great conversation and uh, uh, you know, we definitely appreciate all of the viewers who uh tuned in today to watch the Whittmore Community Magazine live on Facebook and uh certainly appreciate our special guest, uh, Mayor Barbara Blaine Bellamy. Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
I love you. Thank you for having me. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And of course, Ori County Councilman Orton Bellamy, you're a real trooper. You didn't give up. You, 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 you kept trying to join us.
Right, right. We got, we got audio.
I can't even take, uh, yeah, I, I can't take credit for the audio. One of the viewers actually sent me a text and said, hey, can he, can he talk on the phone? Can he come by speaker? And I was like, that's a good idea. Yeah, good, thank you. Thank you. Yeah. And that was a viewer from Charlotte, as a matter of fact.
Sometimes they got people that listen to us.
That's, put our minds together, right?
That's right. Takes a village to come up with the answer.
That's right. There you go.
I like that. I like that.
You like that, right?
Yeah. So, so what are we looking for uh next week, April? Who, who's?
Woo, next week we have representatives from Ori Georgetown Technical College who will talk to us about our plans to resume, um, I guess, you know, I won't say regular, regularly scheduled programming, because uh definitely won't be regularly scheduled programming. Uh, we've been working really hard to be creative about uh continuing our summer semester and May, May semester, summer semester, and of course, moving into the fall. Uh, recruitment efforts are still happening. Uh, you know, financial aid is still being processed. You can't, there's, actually, this is the best time. And I say this because of all the resources that are available to people right now, financial resources and everything else. Now is the best time to think about returning to school and also uh talk to your seniors about continuing their path, uh, if they're college bound. I know a lot of seniors have talked about taking a gap year or two, and I'm personally not really an advocate of that, especially now, uh, because there's so much uncertainty. We don't want people to get so far off track that they find it hard to actually, you know, refocus and get back to where they used to be. There's, there's so many things or to what they want to do. There's so many things that are available to our seniors, uh, and even those who are looking at PACE programs and dual enrollment. And we're going to talk about all of that. Uh, you know, we'll touch upon all the financial aid that's available, what you need to do now if you're thinking about taking classes for the summer and even into the fall, new programs, all this good stuff. Uh, Ori Georgetown Tech, along with our South Carolina State Tech System. And of course, we're under the orders of the governor as well, and he's our employer. Uh, so we are, we've been working on a plan for uh, you know, returning back to our campuses. So if you, if you know of anyone who uh was, you know, is enrolled, returning in the summer, returning in the fall, trying to, you know, finish out the spring semester, um, you know, who's thinking about some options, we do have options. We have uh, resources that are even free, uh, you know, as far as paying for school. You'll want to tune in next Monday at 6:00 PM right here on Facebook, Whittmore Community Magazine. Um, Ori Georgetown Tech will bring you all that good information.
And uh, yeah. I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm an advocate of, of a, of a, a junior college that I, I still say junior college, but it's, it's a technical college. And uh, it, they offer so much and it's so much is free. You know, I just wish I had that long drawn, you know, this, you know, stuff out there, right? Uh, Mayor, am I right on that?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I've been paying student loans my whole life.
I'm trying to tell you. If I knew then what I know now, hey, I probably would have gone the community college route as well. I just, as a matter of fact, I, I just viewed a webinar from Johns Hopkins University. There were some uh corporate executives and a couple of VPs uh from um JH, and they all talked about the fact that community and technical college is the, is the way to go for cost-effective ways to jumpstart your education. Uh, you know, because of course, you can get those gen eds out of the way in, in the two years that you're in a community college and then, you know, transfer to a senior institution and only have about two, two and a half years to complete your core courses towards your track. You may even be able to complete a degree in the two years that you're the community college. And I know that um, we use it a little loosely, but it's, it's free. And essentially, if you're Pell Grant eligible, uh, you don't even have to touch student loans because there's so much money out there. If you uh have a great GPA coming out of high school, you're a life scholar. Money, money right there for you. So, you know, I think people need to be reminded of that, especially parents who are a little leery of their um, children going off to school right now, or maybe even returning to their senior institutions if they, you know, don't have solid plans. A, a community or technical college would be a good way to go. So we'll, we'll be here to tell you all about that. Some of my colleagues are joining me and um, would be more than happy to tell. And my, of course, my part at Ori Georgetown Tech is uh career development and career services. So we're still working on getting students and alumni placed into, to jobs. And I can tell you that there are employers who are getting ready to recruit. Uh, and you know, they're ready. They gotta, mainly in healthcare, that's one area where if you're trying to think of a career path, we need you in healthcare. We definitely need you in healthcare. So um, join us next.
That's a wide open field.
It's a wide open field. Healthcare and technology.
Yeah.
Healthcare and technology, job security.
So if, if I may, um, um, April say something about uh our upcoming magazine that's coming out. Yes, look, we're, you talking about some entrepreneurship. You're gonna see our front cover, our cover page. You're gonna, you're gonna like it. You're gonna like, you're gonna see our youth coming into action with their ingenuity and uh their entrepreneurship skills. And um, you know, you're just gonna like it. Okay? So look for it in a couple of days, couple of three or four days, uh, along with other information. Of course, we got information about the mayor in, inside, um, and, and everything that's happening out.
She's not moving.
Okay. Uh, they're in your contract.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
So uh, just look for it, you know, and keep supporting our advertisers that are, that in, in the magazines. So we can continue to go and research information for you, for our viewers, and then uh work well with our um, Whittmore Community Magazine, our power that's with uh viewing right now. And of course, don't leave out the network. Everything goes through the net.
Yeah, I'd like to thank the viewers uh who are from the network. Thank you so much for uh joining us every single week. And of course, on Fridays, along with uh I, along with uh Dr. Winston McIver Jr., we give you the COVID-19 updates. And we may or may not have a special guest, uh, but we definitely will have those updates for you. So make sure you tune in on Fridays at four o'clock. And uh, the network is also sponsoring game nights on Thursday nights. We had our first game night last week, trivia. It was so much fun. And we did, uh, we gave some prizes, the Soul Stirrers, uh, which uh, it consisted of the Eagles and the, and uh, yeah, the Eagles family and um, uh, the Patton family, they were a part of it. And uh, Amanda Butler and a few other people, Eugene Bellamy, some other folks who played, uh, Tamika Gore from Charlotte. She's the one who actually uh asked us to use the phone so that, or, because we can do the speaker. I gave you credit, Tamika. Uh, you know, she was a part of it. And so this week, we're actually gonna uh have our game night, Black Card Revote. If you have not uh signed up yet, let's get signed up. It's gonna be a lot of fun, okay? So thank you all for joining us. We really do appreciate it. Of course, there'll be a rebroadcast of this later on. And uh, as always, thank you Mayor Blaine Bellamy for all that you do for the city of Conway. We're so blessed to have you as our leader.
Thank you. Just sign me up for Friday.
I got you. I got you.
If I can, if I can say a shout out to uh, to Dr. McIver, uh, because uh when he comes on it, on the network, he has new updated information each time.
Yes, every time.
So, so valuable. I mean, uh, he does his research.
Yes, he does.
From one product to the other on this, on this virus and, and, and how it's, it's moving itself. So uh, shout out to this brother.
And thank you Marilyn Hemingway of the Gulliguchi Chamber of Commerce. She uh is also our partner on the COVID-19 updates for the network on Fridays. And so uh, we do appreciate her partnership with the Gulliguchi Chamber of Commerce as well. So thank you all for tuning in today.
Thanks for the invitation.
Yeah, absolutely. Really do appreciate it.
Brother Mon Bell, sorry we couldn't get you. We have a little technical difficulties with the.
But we worked through it, yeah.
We did. All right.
Thank you very much, guys.
Yeah, you're welcome.
We appreciate it. Okay, I'll be like that.
All right, thank you. There was a, a request that I posted information about the COVID testing. I will post it on all of our pages uh right after this broadcast. So thank you very much. Mayor, wow, take care. All right. All right. Take care, Brother Edward.
Good night.
Great. I'm, I'm going.
Okay, good night.
Night.